Welcome to the August 21st meeting of the Eastham Select Board. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. That is a change. We normally use to broadcast over channel 18, but Comcast has changed their lineup. So we're now on channel eight. So that's for your information. So we'll start with any public or select board information on items that are not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything? Amy?
Just quickly, I talked to Linda Saucy in the clerk's office today, and she said all of our amendments, our bylaws and our charter, I guess a charter for the, to hold town meeting in another, maybe it's not charter. Maybe it's just a bylaw.
Yeah.
All the bylaws.
Whichever it is, that we can have town meeting in another town. We should probably start planning because they're going to fill up. If we want it like in the auditorium in Orleans or something, we should probably get on booking that, yeah. May is going to come around before we do it.
Jerry, you have anything?
No.
I do. I went to the meeting of the Historic Commission last week. And our plan and which we accomplished of consolidating the Historic Commission and the Cemetery Commission seems to be working extremely well. The Historic Commission, J. Camp has met with John Roughly and gone over. They toured both cemeteries, came up with a list of action items on things that needed to be done and maintained. And they're going forward with that. So I think that was a good move. And Historic Commission and John are doing a great job. So I think we'll see a benefit out of that consolidation. Does anyone in the public have anything they'd like to say? Okay, we'll move on to appointments. The first is a tax classification hearing. Colleen Mercurio and Rich B. Enview, you're on.
Well, thanks for having me. Colleen had a family emergency at the last minute today, so she's not here. So you've got me. I ought to be able to get through the high points of this. But if you have any detailed questions, we can follow up with Colleen and get back to you. But in Colleen's absence, I would like to introduce Alexandra Peterson. I don't know that we ever really formally introduced her to the board. Why don't you come on up? Alex is, I think technically we call her the field appraiser, but she's our Assistant Assessor in Training. And this, I'm glad you're here to participate because this is kind of closes out her first full cycle of participating in the valuation of property and the presentation to a tax classification hearing, which as you know, you're here tonight to decide on essentially four things. The first is the allocation of the tax levy amongst the valuing property classes, five different property classes, and to decide on three potential exemptions. So we'll go through those really quick. And I do believe you had some information in your packet. And there is a presentation that I'll share online as well. So we kind of already covered this purpose here. You have to determine the percentage of tax to apply to each class of property, real or personal property. And we're talking and deciding tonight for this fiscal year on a residential exemption, a small commercial exemption, and an open space discount. The assessors have met and they've provided their recommendation, which we'll get to at the end of this. But this sheet here shows the valuations of the various classes of property. The residential class is by far our biggest class. And all these 101, 102, when, you know, anything starting with a one here represents various types of residential properties and the associated values. In total, the value for Eastham for January 1, 2023 is this bottom line number of four, just about $4.8 billion. Let's see. There we go. So for FY '24, that 4.8 is up 11.6% in total from the prior year. And you might recall, we had a little bit of surprise the prior year where we were up over 25%. So this is quite a bit, still a solid increase, but quite a bit reduced from the prior year, prior year increase in values. We still remain a highly residential and highly reliant on the residential property tax. This hasn't changed much over recent years. About 97% of all property value is residential category. And one thing that new that Colleen and I have been talking about is just to show the trends between the median and the average over time. It's hopefully gives you a little perspective on how, where we've been and where we're going. And obviously you can see a big increase last year from five, or let's look at the median from the 493, four to 625, six. This year, the median is up to 704, eight. And because of that, values increasing without a corresponding increase in the amount of levy being raised actually results in a decrease in the property tax. So if you approve the assessors, Board of Assessors recommendations tonight, we will set our tax rate this week at a value of about $7.01, which is a decrease from 724. And if you go back in time and you look at, and that wasn't, you know, it was before my time in early 2000s. We're not sure exactly what happened, but from 2004 onwards, you can see that it had declined. And then when the housing crisis hit and values moderated or declined, you see that our tax rate increased. But ever since the last several years where we've had substantial increases in values, now we're seeing we're on the downcrease as do the tax rate. And then this just summarizes it again in comparison to the prior year. So total residential 13.2, prior year 25, in total 13% versus almost 25% last year. Also, an important factor in setting our tax rate, not necessarily one of the decisions that you have to make tonight, but just good information to have is what is our property tax levy? What, this represents the amount that you are going to assign to the various categories of property. So we start with the prior year levy. We add our two and a half percent. As you're all aware, we're allowed to add under proposition two and a half. We did have an override of 710,000 this year. That gets added into it. The one thing I really want to focus on, and I think the next slide is a graph that shows some history on this, is the new growth of 304,000 that we just got certified from the Department of Revenue this week, or this past week, represents a second year in a row of substantial increases. Now, of course, a lot of that does have to do with residential construction and renovation and building permits associated with that. But Alex and Colleen have also been doing a really good job, particularly Alex with all her field work. On picking up anything that is building permit related. So if you're adding a new deck or improving your deck, or an outdoor shower, or any number of things, those are, represent new growth. And those are things that in the past haven't necessarily picked up. And so when Colleen got here, that's something her and I talked about and had been working on for a couple of years. And we're starting to see the benefit of that now. Because it's not just, you know, $300,000 this year, and it could have been a hundred.
Permits in the system and just kind of cleaning up and dealing with the backlog. And then making sure that no matter who comes after me or after the people in the building department have a clear process in front of them. In terms of permits, we are still seeing a lot of activity out there. People are renovating, demo, rebuild, a lot of that. So hard to tell when that's going to stop, but doesn't seem like the high costs of materials are stopping anyone, so.
So a key part of what she's done is improve that process to make sure that we're picking up all those permits and also properly valuing the permits. Because the values of the permits generate a fee for us, but they also go to the assessor's office. And Alex is making sure that the assessor's office is getting all this permit data to do those inspections to capture that new growth.
Great.
So. Based on the, so we have a levy limit. I think I might have skipped over it real quick. I'm not going to go back and mess up the slideshow here. But the amount that we're going to actually raise, 33,586, is less than our limit by a couple hundred thousand. And that goes to, we settled, we had this conversation during the budget process that we settled our contracts and we want to make sure that we're stewarding the override that pays those contracts to get us through the three years of the contracts. So we have a little bit excess levy capacity, as it's called, that hopefully will carry us through. But the amount we're raising, the 33,586 divided by 4,791 of value, results in a $7.01, assuming that you go with the Board of Assessors recommendations. Here is a chart showing, this is something we've started tracking with the Finance Committee. And we do it as part of the budget process and part of our budget hearing. And I think there's value to it. It lets us know how we're doing in relation to how well our citizens and residents are doing. But this shows on the top part, the median household income, or median income, I should say, or per capita income, I should say, versus the tax burden that's generated in each year. So what's not on here, and we'll get it on there for the next time. But in 2024, $4,940 is, represents 12.6% of the 39,000 per capita income. Under 13% of that per capita income is going to property tax, which you, you know, might not recall. But we had a budget hearing and one of the slides was anticipating what this would look like. And at that budget hearing back in March, we put down that if you accepted a town meeting pass the budget as we presented, that we estimated that our tax burden for the median household would be 4,990. It's actually 4,940, so we're 50 bucks better. And we estimated it'd be an increase of $460. And where it's actually only an increase of 410, 411. So instead of a 10.16% increase, it's a 9% increase from what we are talking about at the budget hearing. So it's always good to come in. We're pretty close, but we're glad we came in a little bit lower. But last year, this 12.66% of per capita income is an increase and is expected. And we're hoping to, hopefully not increase that percentage too much. But it's a result largely of the debt that's coming on board related to the water project. So with some debt dropping off, we're hopeful that we can keep it in this 13% range. The prior year, the percent of property tax burden to income was just under 12%. And then the last couple of years has always been about 11 and a half. So we're, been holding a good range. We're up a little bit because of all the new debt. So this is last year's data. Compared to this year's data. And then just. Summarizing it again. Which brings us to what we're really here for tonight. That gives you all the information of what, all the resultant factors of the appropriations and values of properties. So now your decision for the point of the classification hearing is of that 33 and a half or so million dollars of property tax levy, how much do we want to allocate to each of the property classes, commercial, industrial, personal property, and residential? Historically, Eastham has always, and the Board of Assessors recommend a factor of one, meaning that it's applied equally amongst all the classes. We don't have any substantial differentiation. You don't have a large commercial base that would justify really doing something much different. If you did, potentially you could reduce the tax burden on the residential class, but you would increase it on the commercial class, which is very small. You'd have to make a dramatic shift in order to achieve any degree of value to anybody because you have such a small base. But that's the effect of doing that, of shifting that.
Do you know of any towns on the Cape that have that, have a difference for commercial?
I do not think so. If you do do that, it results in a split tax rate. So there's two different tax rates at least. One for the commercial, one for the residential taxpayers.
And the personal property tax, Rich, that's, personal property, from my understanding, it's only paid by non-resident taxpayers and the value of stuff inside the home. Is that right?
Correct. And also, commercial, the value of equipment and things like that.
I'm just curious if any towns have that greater than one?
No. Again, that would result in a split tax rate for the commercial, industrial, it's called CIP, Commercial, Industrial, and Personal Property Tax, would be a different tax rate than the residential tax rate. I don't believe that you can fine tune that and have it just to the personal property. It's got to be to the three, the commercial, industrial, personal property.
All right, thank you.
You are also here tonight to take your vote on three potential exemptions. And we have a process here where we've talked about the residential tax exemption each winter in January, plus or minus. And at that time, you voted not to adopt it for this fiscal year, which is, and if you maintain that position, that's helpful to us. That's why we can get here and set our tax rate, submit it to the Department of Revenue, get it certified. It allows us to send out our tax bills, which greatly helps with our cash flow. Enables us to get through the fall, summer and fall without having to do any temporary borrowing. As you know, if you were to adopt the residential tax exemption, we would have to, need some lead time to do, set up modifications to our software and to do some advertising and solicitation of applications and have that whole process. But that's something that we'll continue to talk about in January. And the Board of Assessors recommends that you do not do the residential tax exemption. And they would like to meet with you in advance of this upcoming year's session to talk about alternatives that they've been considering and working on. There's also a potential for an open space discount. We don't have any, so we don't, yes, Board of Assessors does not recommend that. And we make no sense to do so.
Can you explain that to me? We have open space, right? But you said we don't have any parcels that are classified as open space.
Well, Cape Cod National Seashore would be the biggest, which we would consider open space. But I don't think that's even meets that classification because it's just exempt altogether.
Well, I'm thinking about this thing where we have designated, you know, the conservation stuff, where you designate a piece of property as, as conservation restricted. And I always thought that was open space.
And so we have town-owned open space, but again, it's just exempted altogether. It's not even a parcel. Perhaps something by the Eastham Conservation Trust.
So if.
Again, I think that's because that's an exempt entity.
Yeah, they don't.
But what about like, say, well, say I have my property, I have part of it in a conservation restriction. It's held by the Eastham Conservation Foundation. But I still own it.
Right.
And it has a reduced rate.
Thing in your case, it's titled to you. And I don't know, Alex, do you have a good definition of the open space parcel? This is a good Colleen question. There's a lot of fine points to this one. But I do believe that in your case, for example, it's owned by you and you own your parcel privately and you have a reduced value associated with your parcel because it's restricted. But not an open space designation.
Okay. So it does, there are some reduced values, but no discounts. That makes sense.
So how you.
Not considered an open space parcel.
How do you get an open space designation?
I think a lot of it has to do with what's called chapter lands. If it's designated agricultural, designated open space. And I think there's a whole process that goes through, legal process. People file with the assessors. And it goes to the state to do that.
Or you can give your property to like the Eastham Conservation Foundation.
But again, that's not considered open space.
It's not considered open space.
Yeah, because I think that's an exempt entity. So there is a process. And I can get you more information when Colleen's back.
Yeah, I've been fuzzy on it myself, even though I understand there aren't any. But so it's not, it's kind of a moot point as far as.
See, I'm just lucky I got this far through this presentation. Assessing is not my.
No, no, you're doing.
I think that's what we were discussing at the last Board of Assessors, that it's not like, because we have chapter land and we have conservation and there was no like clear line between those and open space. So we were gonna look more into that because we thought that was kind of strange too, that some things, you look at them and you would classify them as open space. But, yeah.
And then the final exemption that you can consider is a small commercial exemption. And it has to meet certain limits, less than a million dollars in value, less than 10 employees in average over last year. But it doesn't go to the business. It goes to the owner of the building. So you'd have to be a business that owns the building that you operate out of to get the value associated with it. Presumably, I guess, if you got some reduction, maybe your rent could be less. But again, we're not talking, we're talking about less than 1% of commercial property. Or maybe it was 1.8%, I think it was. Very small percentage that is not really worthwhile. And then you'd have to make a substantial adjustment in order to derive any value since it is so small.
So you said 1. something percent could qualify for a commercial exemption. Of that 1 plus percent, some of that would not go to the business. It would go to the property owner. Do we have any idea what that split is?
No, and we'd also have to parse that down for valued less than a million and having fewer than 10 employees. And that was certified by, it's not employment and training anymore, so I forget what it's called, but some, a state agency.
So we shouldn't have a protest next week of all these commercial businesses coming. Say, why didn't we get an exemption?
I wouldn't imagine.
Well, if you think about Town Center Plaza, all eight of those businesses wouldn't meet the criteria because someone else owns the building, right?
Yeah, but I got to imagine there's some commercial businesses in town where the, the business actually owns the property.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, Rich, with this exemption, if you had this exemption, would it be similar to the residential one that you're still going to get 33 such and such million in taxes? And so if you drop, get an exemption to the commercials, the, basically the residential properties would have to pay a little bit more? Is that.
No, it stays within, stays within the property class. So giving these small businesses the exemption would be at the expense of the other commercial, industrial, and personal property. They would make up the difference.
Okay. Oh, that, that really changes. Yes, okay. Good, thank you.
So Board of Assessors has reviewed and voted all these, and they recommend a residential factor of one, which is a unified tax rate. No residential exemption, no small commercial business exemption, no open space discount. And here is the suggested motion on the board.
So we could do a motion with all of it at once?
Yes.
Awesome.
One question I have is, but then we're going to look at this in January that you said, Rich, the residential exemption. We review, every January, we review the residential tax exemption, non-resident versus resident. We discuss specifically the percentage of residences, the percentages of, excuse me, part-time residents and full-time residents. And then we make a decision as to whether we want to generate a residential tax exemption. But we do it every January.
And the reason we do it in January, Jerry, is it does require some lead time for us to make software adjustments and have a process set up, solicit applications and process the applications.
And potentially even hire someone. But then what are we discussing today? Because I think it's August. I don't think it's January at the moment.
Right. Well, we do it in January so that we have, you know, six, seven, eight months to get it in place if that's what you choose to do in the future. But right now, you can't take these votes, you can't have this tax classification hearing until all our values are certified by the Bureau, what's called the Bureau of Local Assessment at the state. And they've certified all those values. And we can't have this presentation to you if we don't know that it's, you know, the value is 4.8 billion, for example. Because what if it was something else? Maybe theoretically it could change your mind if the values are different.
So theoretically, okay, next year at this time, if in January, we would vote to have a residential tax exemption, then we'd be looking at this, this document indicating that we have a residential exemption, tax exemption for part-time, for full-time residents. So I mean, we're working a year in advance, basically. Since we decided in January, we weren't going to have one, that says we don't have one for this coming tax year. But if we decide next January that we want one, then we would begin the process to have.
More of an informal vote.
So, yeah, this is the official.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, the designation as a tax classification hearing, this is where those things need to happen. It has to be advertised on your agenda as a tax classification hearing. And the DOR always looks for that type of.
I mean, the vote you take in January, ideally it's consistent. But truth be told, if you decided in January, you wanted to go with a residential exemption and we started to prepare for that, you could still vote in August not to do it. Because this is your official vote.
Thank you. That, that, that helps me immensely. So the reason I, one of the reasons I raised it is that both Jamie and Suzanne are not here. And they were, in January, they were the two that voted in favor of residential exemption. And the three of us who are here voted no. I just didn't know. So, but today, it's a requirement in the sense of timing that we have to do it today.
Yes.
Okay.
You ready?
So, so I guess we move. You have the, you had the motion up there. I don't see it now, but I would, I would move that motion.
I'll do it.
Okay.
All right, I, I move to use a residential factor of one, not to grant an open space discount, not to grant a residential exemption, and not to grant a small business exemption.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll vote, jury? Yes, Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to bring up, the Tax Assistance Committee. In past years, when the tax bill went out, there's been a blurb on the tax bill that told people about they could donate for tax assistance for people that needed help. So this year, they're going to have a flyer with the tax bill that explains, hopefully explains the program and the ability to donate towards it. Because at this point in time, they can't give out any money this year because they have no money. They have very little money. So I just wanted to make sure that that happened when, when we sent out their tax bills. If I can help with that at all, let me know.
And since you mentioned that, I will mention, we've been working for, and waiting a couple of years now for that Eastham Community Fund that Town Meeting approved as special legislation, which would allow us to expand some of that and maybe solicit or even put some of our own money into it. So last, it makes it all the way through the committees, but then never makes it to the floor for a final vote. So I'm hopeful, hopeful that this is the year that that happens.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's Alex.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Come, come more often. Love that people come to our meeting. Okay, well, it's going to go to Paul Lag now for the master plan update.
Good afternoon. Just want to get a brief update on the master planning effort. As you know, back in March, we had the Northeastham Village Center Master Plan down through our consultants. And that laid out a number of items for consideration for the Tea Time Site, Town Center, and the COA Site. There's some things pending with that. The next step, however, is to look at the zoning. And these were action items that were recommended in that study. And there are also action items that are included in the strategic plan. But also the seeds for what this scope of work is were actually planted several years ago because this kind of goes back to even 2007 when we had the original Village Center study done. And 2017 when we had our technical assistance panel report. Things like form-based code and architectural guidelines were outlined as recommendations in that report. And really, and the DCPC zoning that we put in place in 2017, 2018. At least in my mind, this scope of work here was always the next step in that DCPC rezoning that we did. Because that was really done on a short timeframe to deal with some development pressures that were coming into town. And we did a good job at getting some things done. But as you start to work with regulations and really kind of rubber hits the road and you realize some adjustments, things need to be done. So in my mind, form-based code. So in my mind, form-based code and these architectural guidelines of this project's scope were always kind of things we needed to come back and revisit. So now's the time where we're gathering all this stuff together, we have a scope of work, and as it lays out in the memo, that includes implementing a form-based code, architectural guidelines, looking at the feasibility of some 40R smart, smart growth overlay zoning, which tries to incentivize affordable housing, a district improvement financing, which that was an item, action item in the strategic plan, which we want to look at, although at this point, I can tell you, we may, we may already know that that's not viable, but we still want to go through, do the due diligence, and if that's not, we have some ideas, working with our consultant for some other approaches to kind of replace that. And then finally, the corridor plan, which we had the beginnings of that in the Northeastham report that came out in March, but we really want to take that and enhance it. And really, to use that as a tool to be able to outreach to the business owners and the property owners in that district. So obviously, we, we own, Town owns Town Center and Tea Time, and those are the two ends, but we have to make a plan that is to everyone's benefit out there. So the corridor plan would really be focusing on engaging with the businesses and the, and the property owners, getting their feedback, finding out what kind of projects they have in the queue, if they're thinking of redeveloping or changing what they're doing out there, so that we can incorporate that into the comprehensive plan, and really, we'll all be on the same page. So if someone wants to put a new building up on their property, at least to the extent we can coordinate, they won't, you know, hopefully be putting it right in the middle of where a sidewalk or a shared access cut might be. So this work, which is really starting this month, is really, like I said, targeted at kind of the nuts and bolts of the zoning piece, to try to put things in place that make sense, to streamline the process, the regulatory process as much as we can, but also anticipate what we think is going to come up for new, new development. I think kind of stepping back, the bigger picture, if we have these items put in place, when we go to look at the next step for the Village Center, the master planning as a whole, and kind of get back into that planning process, some of these pieces will be kind of locked in, and that will help focus the next phase of how do we go about taking the next steps on Tea Time and Town Center and, and the, you know, the financing, the phasing of it, and what the development options are as a whole. So we have, so this was always geared towards if and when we go out for redevelopment or try to partner with a developer, they'll see that here's the zoning, we know what it wants to look like, we know what the uses are out there, maybe we'll have some incentive zoning in there that might result in some tax credits or actual cash payments to the town for housing units, that kind of thing. So it's part of the process. There's a lot of work to do, as always, in a short timeframe, so we're hoping to have the form-based code and the architectural guidelines ready for next year's Town Meeting as the priority, and then hopefully all this stuff will come along in, in sequence, but those are the two priority items. And that's great, that's what we'll be working, oh, I should, so I should mention, the, kind of structurally, the zoning task force will be the kind of nucleus to advise staff and the consultant, and so we'll use that, we're having a kickoff meeting on September 5th at 4 o'clock. And so there'll be advisory, and then, like I said, we'll be forming some stakeholder groups and just try to get out and get in contact with the businesses and the property owners in there and go from there. The consultant, Ted Brovitz, actually worked on the 2007, he worked for Stan Tech Consultants at the time, so he worked on the 2007, so he, you know, so he knows Eastham, he's going to bring a lot of institutional knowledge, so, which is great, because we really want to kind of dive in, kind of jump ahead in the alphabet a little bit, we don't necessarily need to start at A with the grand visioning and the goals, because we know what the town wants, we have the strategic plan, we've done all the Tea Time outreach, so I think that stuff we're confident in, so we can dive in a little bit further in the alphabet and say, what do we, what do we want to do on a, you know, parcel-by-parcel basis?
Yeah, I think that's one big reason it didn't happen back then. They hadn't done all that, like, work, they just showed something that people were like, what is this? You know, and there was no, not much input, I think, really.
So, yeah, and really, what I'm hoping is that, you know, we will, of course, have public meetings and be looking for feedback, but when we do those meetings, really, I want to be bringing something that, you know, here's what, here's what we're going to do based on all of the visioning and all of that stuff, so that we can actually have feedback, not, you know, would you like this, or would you like, no, this is what we think works based on all of the previous planning experience and what is the best practices, and then get feedback on that, so.
So, I might have missed it, though, are we working with the Cape Cod Commission on the, on the form-based coding and the architectural design standards?
So, not directly, so because if we do all of this, what it entails is revising the, the DCPC zoning. And so that requires, it requires approval at our own Town Meeting, but also requires approval by the Cape Cod Commission, you know, the commission itself, not the staff, but the commission and the County Assembly of Delegates. So there is a role to play for the commission, and so what we're doing is basically going to involve the commission planning staff as much as they're going to be available to help, you know, to come to these meetings and check in with them, so that when we put this package together, they can basically recommend that it fits with the, and it's really just to make sure that what we're doing still coincides with the intent of the DCPC and the goals and the vision for that.
What I'm confused about, though, is that, and I worked with you on the DCPC, and we have not, I don't believe, and I could be wrong, that we have solicited anything to do architectural design standards. In other words, I don't remember us having any meetings that said, these are the kind of houses we want, these are the kind of colors we want, the kind of things you would get in an architectural design. So my question is, where is that basis? Where are those, where will that come from? That, those decisions and those selections for architectural design?
So at this point, I don't anticipate that we're going to create like a very strict code of like mandating colors and minute architectural details, it's going to be more of basic forms and layouts and ways to mass, massing and scale and that kind of thing. So.
And we have the expertise to do that internally?
Well, that's what, that's what, no, the consultants, the consultants, that's what we're bringing them in for. So what we have in the zoning bylaw and the DCPC right now is we reference the Cape Cod Commission's guidelines for architectural guidelines. They're not regulations, though, they're basically best practices and suggestions for the guidelines, so they're not, so we want it, and there's a lot, and those are good guidelines, so we want to, you know, certainly take the best parts of that, add anything in that the consultant might have, and then actually just blend it into the regulations, so that it has more teeth, so that we can get the results we want out there, but it also is going to put predictability into the zoning. So like I said, the developer, the business owner says, I want to add an addition or redo my property, if I build it like this, you know, they, we may not dictate colors, and you have to have this type of window and all that stuff, I think that we're not really going that route, but these basic forms, these roof pitches, these size and scale, the step backs, the facade variations, if we have that, that gets us to, you know, an aesthetically, an aesthetic without dictating personal preferences, so it's a balance. So we have something in the, I guess to answer your question, we have some pieces in the bylaw, we want to build off what we have, and that will involve some collaboration with the Cape Cod Commission.
Good, all right, thank you.
Quick question on the, you were talking about the guidelines with massing and things like that, does it also affect layout as to, like, putting the buildings more up front and the parking in the back, sorts of things and all that?
Yep, definitely, and that's, again, we have elements of this in the zoning too, but what we really want to do is, you know, is, we're always looking to streamline the regulatory process, and this is one thing, so adding predictability into the zoning code, but definitely promoting parking into the rear or the side, streetscape, because we're really trying to, you know, create a Village Center that's appropriate for Eastham, and these are all elements, so. And really, it's, I don't want to go on too long, but the form-based code focuses on what you see and what gets built, and less emphasis on the uses, what's happening on the inside. So as long as we're, you know, we're separating things that should be industrial, you know, we don't want industrial or nuisance issue, nuisance uses in the wrong places, but other than that, it really is focusing on is, you know, it's a store, it's a, it's a, it's a beauty salon, it's a, it's a art studio, it's a gallery, it's a convenience store, all of these things are less important really in the grand scheme of what's it going to look like, and is it going to function well with the parking and the layout and all that stuff? That's what we're aiming for.
Awesome, thank you.
Jerry, do you have any questions? No, well, one, just to make sure, what you're looking at, Paul, is really commercial, not so much residential here, or is it going to apply to residential as well?
So the area that we're talking about is that Northeastham Commercial District, so it's primarily, it's commercial and mixed use. And so we want regulations that will have an appropriate, and foster an appropriate mix of that, but it's primarily commercial.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Mr. We have a, on the thing, master plan committee charges and stuff, is that going to come up later, or is that just something for information for us? Well, we're going to talk about the master plan charge update and the, right now. Thank you. All right.
Next on the agenda.
Okay, next on the agenda. Number one, master plan charge update. Is it in our package?
Yeah, it made no changes since the last time you saw it, I just wanted to give people a chance to comment on it. But, you know, even if we, even if you vote it tonight, that will allow us to start building those committees, or rebuilding some of those committees, and it, we can always come back and make tweaks, so.
All right, I'll make a motion, we approve the master plan charge.
I'll second it. Oh, yeah, master plan committee charge, yeah.
Yes, sorry, master plan committee charge.
Okay. Mark, you seconded it? Yeah, any update, any discussion? Okay, we can vote on that then, jury?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. The next one is the Strategic Planning Committee Charge Update. It looked fine to me, I mean, so I'll move that we adopt the Strategic Planning Theory Committee Charge Update for 2023.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote, jury?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, let's move on to the next.
Can I just add one more since it's committee-related, I'm so sorry. We also, the Capital Projects Committee charge that you already voted on, that got sent to the Finance Committee, they're having a meeting this week, so I'm assuming we'll get some feedback on that. But I want people to start thinking about, maybe we'll send something to the Search Committee with the charge, just saying we have a new something, we have a new committee that will replace old ones. And I have gotten a couple of people that are expressing interest, both really good candidates, one member of the Finance Committee is interested, and Fred Guedi wants to come back.
Fred, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the National Seashore Parking Contract Response. So I had a hard time understanding what he was saying, but I'm going to let you, you interpret where we are.
Well, I think when we, we responded the first time, it was because I believed, and I, and I think you agreed with me, that we had a basic disagreement or misunderstanding, whatever you want to call it, about what the 2022 agreement that we signed stated. And so that was the first response. In this one, his, and I thought I wrote a letter that was very clear about where we stood on all the items from that agreement, and referenced the two deeds that conveyed the property to the seashore, because I think, you know, whenever we're in a situation where we're thinking about these things, we have to go back to the document that started it all, and that 1965 deed is what started this collaboration. And so I had reminded the superintendent in that letter that I sent on your behalf, that you and I sent, basically, that said, you know, the deed to us is clear, that the town of Eastham conveyed both beaches, all the property for both beaches and the roads that connect them, for the value of free parking and free access to those beaches and roads in perpetuity. That was the deal, the original deal. And so just wanted to remind them that that is our interpretation of it, and that our interpretation of the 2022 agreement was that, yes, the parking areas were separate, and we were going to help them manage our part of the parking area, but that we would still share both areas if necessary, like we always have. So residents from Eastham should not have to, taxpayers should not have to pay even when they wait in the other line for the general seashore parking. So that was what I said, and I thought the letter was a little confusing, but I thought basically what he was saying was, the free parking only, only applies to the adjacent parking area that we're splitting up, and for the shuttle parking area. And that the document that we signed in 2022, I was right, we do have a basic disagreement because the park believes that we agreed to the attached maps only, so that the free parking was only at the Eastham designated spots. So it was disappointing.
I would remind everyone that when we did our draft of the letter, we just said the number of reserved spots for Eastham residents. It was the seashore that put
The map.
The map in place.
But we did want the map.
Yes, the map.
The map's fine.
But it isn't exclusive to the map.
No.
The map was just supposed to be referenced, so we could show people, instead of just throwing a number out, here's the spaces, you could see where the spaces are supposed to be.
Right. I, I think, I looked at them as they confused the 2022 agreement with the deeds. The 2022 agreement does nothing vis-à-vis the deeds, my understanding, because the 2022 agreement was, came about after, to try and help them, I guess, we, Eastham did not create its own beach, and we helped them not have drop-offs on, on the roads. So I, I, I look at this as they're saying the 2022 agreement, is it ignoring the deeds, which is exactly incorrect. The deed says, you don't, you can't charge an Eastham taxpayer to park in a National Park Service designated parking lot for Coast Guard Beach or Nauset Lake Beach. And my personal view on this is that if we push that hard, that they, they, National Park Service may try and get out of the 2022 agreement, but I think that the problem with agreeing with their interpretation is that we've changed the nature of the deeds, which we cannot do, and we, we have not done. So we have to make that perfectly clear. I have one question for Jackie, if you know, talking to the lawyer, our counsel. Reading the deeds that you included Reading the deeds that you included lets me see that they have, the town granted to the park service, Doane Road from Nauset Road down to Coast Guard Beach and Cable Road from Nauset Road down to Nauset Light Beach. And it doesn't say anything about Ocean View. Have we, did the town, is it read that the town has deeded Ocean View because that's also an access to each of the beaches?
No, I'm sorry, Jerry, that, that was my bad, no. We did not deed that beach. You're correct. It's cable.
Is a town road.
Yes.
All right. So, yeah, just looking at it, this is from a Machiavellian strategy view on this, is I would go talk to them, but I would immediately put up signs on Ocean View Drive and work with our police department and say, we can have drop-offs at Coast Guard Beach and Nauset Light Beach until this gets straightened out. And, and the thing that gets me most upset is this is a change post 2022 agreement because last year it, it didn't apply. So this is, this is a change that park services done.
Right.
I like your idea.
And you're, you're absolutely correct. Our attorney has opined that the deed supersedes all, so.
So we were, our attorney got back to them and said, could they allow us to park free until this matter was resolved? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And how did the seashore respond to that?
They didn't. They said that there was a letter in progress and, and that, that counsel would talk to the superintendent about the letter.
And that's this letter?
Yes.
So I guess, you know, so pretty much, I think they continued charging for another two or three weeks. And then they removed the guards after Labor Day sometime in that timeframe.
Yeah, there's a few weekends after that.
Then they charged in the weekends.
Couple of weekends. So what, what's, you know, I like your idea, Jerry, I mean, but where are we in this? I don't, I, I'm not, I just don't see us having any leverage. I don't know what we should be doing other than just.
I think what our attorney is saying is that, yes, we might not have very much time now, but we certainly have time before next season and that he would want to meet with you and, and make a plan.
Yeah. I mean, the thing is that this occurrence, if the Eastham portion of Nauset Light Beach is full and the seashore portion is not full, rarely happens.
Right. But it, it, Amy, it's still a change. I mean, last year.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I'm just saying for the rest of the year.
And it's particularly problematic in, in Nauset Light Beach that doesn't have any tram access, right? Because, you know, one of the calls, and I'm getting a lot of calls on this, really, people, not only, they've definitely noticed and it's affected people this season. And one mother called me and she was very upset because they were having a family get-together on Nauset Light Beach. The whole family had gone and parked. Her son, who was 18 or 19, was working, couldn't come before one o'clock, got to the beach, was waiting in the Eastham line. He actually was refused entrance into the other line, even though he has a National Park pass on his vehicle, because he was already in the Eastham line. So it's just, and of course, she was furious. He missed, he waited in line for an hour and missed, you know, the, even more of the family outing. And, and that wouldn't have happened before because there were eight, as she said, eight people passed by the Eastham line and parked in the park service parking lot while he was sitting there waiting. So it is not causing a good feeling in the community, and I, and I feel like, you know, you're absolutely correct. We have to fight for it. We cannot give up this basic right.
Yeah.
I would, Jackie and I talked about this a little bit before the meeting, and I think really we need a meeting with them, with probably the three of us, our rec director.
Yes.
Maybe the police chief, and then they can bring whoever they want.
Whatever staff. But we do have to have staff there. It's so important to have. Christine Mickel, our beach and rec director, has had a 20-year history with, with these management agreements. So it's really important that she's at the table because so many things aren't in the agreement that we've successfully done together over the past years.
Yeah.
So is that the next step then? I mean, we, we haven't responded to this letter, right?
No.
No.
I sent an email back.
I saw your email back that said he didn't know what he was talking about, basically.
I didn't say that.
No, he doesn't know what he's talking about. I mean, it's, let's, you know, be honest about this.
Basically, I did say that we would meet to discuss anything except free parking access.
So then, do you want to set that meeting up?
Yes, I will, I will do my best.
And will we bring our lawyer with us?
He, he doesn't opine either way. He said as, you know, I have strict instructions, so he trusts us to handle it, but if you want him there, he could come.
I'm just, just, I'm just trying to understand the, the.
You could take Jerry instead of me.
The pressure, I mean, whether that signals something to him or not.
Well, the, the issue, if we take the legal route, I mean, I don't think we have time, I know you're, what you'd like to do, Art, to get it resolved before later.
No, you don't really know what I'd like to do, but I can say it.
I know what you, I know what you like to do. I'm Italian too, but it's, it's also, I, I think that if we, we immediately jump to the legal counsel mode, they will become much more defensive and bring someone from their solicitor's office or some, or someone, someone there. Since I think summer is gone, summer 2023 is basically gone vis a vis this, then we should, we should try to, he says he'd like to meet, if so, we should discuss further how to manage these lots. I think that's, he's, he's got an opening he wants to meet, and I think we should try and do it as quickly as possible so we have time if we, we decide we have to go legal route.
Well, that's why I like to keep it moving.
Yep.
Yeah. One question I have, Jackie or any of you, because I don't recall, can we or can the park service with notice get out of the 2022 agreement?
90 days.
Yes, we can both do it.
90 days?
90 days.
I think, you see, I think that that's most likely a reaction that a knee-jerk negative reaction to the park service can have on this. What it does is it hurts, would eventually hurt Coast Guard Beach vis a vis Nauset Light, the parking lot, I don't know how many more years it's going to be there. I think that when we were, when all of us were at the part-time taxpayers' meeting, Brian was saying that they're looking right now into setting up a shuttle service, trying to find some place to build a parking lot, I guess, near the high school and have a shuttle service, so.
That, well, that would be great because I think that would be helpful.
If, if you read between the lines, he's threatening that when they reduce that parking further, we may not have any spots.
Yeah, he's actually threatening he would get rid of those spots and probably the spots up behind the Coast Guard building at Coast Guard Beach and saying, okay, you can, you, you park for free at, at our parking lots and you wait in line with everybody else. I think that's, that's where their threat is. They can't go further than that because the deeds are the deed. They, they, you know, we can park for free. But that's what we have to be mindful of as we go into this meeting, is that's what they would do. They'll back out of the 2022 agreement with 90 days' notice, and there we are. We park free at the general parking lots, wherever they are. I don't know what it means for behind Coast Guard House because that's not really a paid parking lot for them.
Okay, set a meeting up.
Yep.
Move on to town manager's report.
So as Amy stated earlier, all of our bylaws have passed the Attorney General's Office review, so that's excellent. I will be checking up on our final spec, piece of special legislation, which is the community fund. We really need to follow up on that and make sure. It was on Sarah's agenda as of when we checked in with her in May, so hopefully it's going to be on the September legislative schedule. And I think that's it. I wrote a lot in my town manager.
Yeah.
Windmill Weekend coming up.
Oh, Windmill Weekend, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's great that we may start in November with the extension to Wellfleet of the water lot.
Yeah. That's looking on target.
Is, is that good?
Yeah, looking good.
That's, that's great. I don't see any.
I'm good.
Paul, what, do we know? I'm sorry, go ahead, Jerry.
Do we know any kind of hit, that financial hit on the closure of Cooks Brook Beach has with our revenues of, the beach parking revenue?
It's a good question. I think the daily parking revenue is down this summer anyway because we had such odd weather.
Right.
That, at the beginning of the summer, but, but we still have First Encounter and all the other beaches. So I don't know, I mean, I put in all the other statistics that we had, but I don't know what the cash reconciliation on the daily.
How many, 300 more, 300 or 400 more taxpayer stickers this year?
I know.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that was amazing, yeah.
So, but I'll get that from Christine as soon as we have it.
And I got the notice, the email on us resurrecting ancient bacterias. So that was kind of nice.
It's ancient peat.
Ancient peat with the bacteria within it.
Well, when the air gets to the peat, then we get the bacteria.
Bacteria coming, yeah. All right.
Perfect conditions.
Perfect storm, all right.
New and upcoming agenda items, if needed, follow-up. Does anyone have anything? All right, move on to minutes. We need to vote on the August 7th minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 7th minutes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Are there any other business or correspondence we want to talk about? Okay, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.